So you're good, we open it up, get something to eat.
Let's do it, I'm hungry. We'll eat our food while we're listening.
Yeah, she said it's warm, so we don't want to get cold.
Yep.
I'll call the meeting to order. So as we open the meeting, we're gonna take a quick break. We're gonna go get some, our lunch, and we're gonna come back to the discussion so that we can have everything and be great. So let's take a break, get some lunch.
You bring your plate up here.
I can eat what you're eating. Actually, yeah.
Yeah, there's one at sunrise, I'm really good at Twin Oaks. There is no one, yeah, you do it on a night, in the evening. Yeah, it's always. Well, you do it over lunch, it got worse. Until there's food there, you're like, I have to eat that, or there's food. Afterward, let's set a bar. Yeah. I never saw it anywhere except I was like, look on, what is this? How are you?
Patrick and I are gonna split this day, he's gonna take off from work from the beginning and work from the second half. Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Good.
Well, me too. It's good to wash yourself though, because this is a private meeting.
I'm sure we should.
You're speaking like a message twenty minutes. Okay, there's gonna be a test just over, I wanna know.
My stuff is actually, my vacation stuff is actually at the end of July this year.
No, just shoot the fireworks, shut up, pray over the food.
It's the last week of July and the first of July.
I got some great pictures for you.
There's a chance our October stuff.
Uh, yeah. Putting your work needs to, I guess, on the target of it, yeah. Some emails, some guy who's posting somewhere, you know what? We do rhythms.
It's a big rhythm. Well, they would never see this. Although, you know, everybody knows that it's family, or restaurants, you know. We loved it when we were looking and trying to get everything, you know, the video, everything we had, we liked so much. It's owned by someone.
It is. But say, but here's a thing. I get money, you guys support it.
So, hoping that it doesn't affect me.
I think, I think that's what I wanted, not to make it known.
Years ago. It's not gonna be quite a different place now. But the rooms offered are still like the same. Either infinity pool or.
Oh, man.
I know.
Poor guy.
I was like, I was not about to look at you, like, I would've, I would've lost. I would've.
I'm gonna sit over and do like fun stuff.
Yeah. I was talking about the next weekend as well. I know, I shouldn't like, find that as humorous as I did, but that was funny.
Is it the one that's in the, the bag?
I wonder.
Yeah, yeah, those are nice. Makes it pretty easy sometimes.
I'm here. Yeah, I know, you're good help, you look good. Sorry. Good seeing you, buddy.
One thirty.
Yeah. Cause you're always mean.
Only second.
Yeah, I could.
I haven't, forgot that. I did do your bottom thirty.
I did major things.
Are you guys leaving like as soon as you go?
Yeah, I think so, Becky was trying. Depends on what, she had something that she had to do for work, so hopefully she was gonna get it done this morning. If we, if we get too late, then we'll just wait until first time.
How long is it?
It's about eight hours.
Eight.
Yeah, it's not bad.
I can never remember if it's six or eight.
Not a bad drive.
It's not. Okay. I asked.
It's not forty-four.
It's not, no, that makes all the difference. The weather's nice, I don't mind going on road trips, but.
Yeah.
Bob Ford. Eleven eleven. Michael, can you, there you go, thank you. Good morning, or almost afternoon, Bob Ford, Chief Financial Officer. We're gonna spend some time today reviewing fiscal year twenty twenty-four's results. Now, once again, these are the internal numbers that the city has prepared, it's the documentation, and it's the data that our auditors use in order to perform their audit. Matter of fact, if you happen to go across to the huddle room, the auditors are on site this week doing their field work. So we're in the midst of the audit cycle. Expectation would be that the auditors will present their findings sometime in mid-May, no later than early June. Once again, though, the numbers that you're looking at today are the basis for their audit, so the numbers will tie. Hey, Michael, could you do the next slide, it's not, this is not working. Oh, I don't know. That's probably why, okay. So highlights. So net surplus for the year, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, was better than budget by seventeen point two million dollars. So you're gonna hear a lot of good news today. But a lot of the good news you're gonna hear today is a result of timing and a number of other things, and I'll point those out as we go along. But once again, net surplus for the year, which would be total revenues minus total operating expenses, plus cash sources, minus capital expenditure, so total surplus, better than budget by seventeen point two million. Operating surplus, so now we're talking about the operating budget, operating surplus is better than budget by two point three million. That was driven by revenues that were better than budget by two point seven million, and net expenses were worse than budget by about three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. On the capital side, capital surplus was better than budget by fourteen point nine million dollars. Funding sources were higher than the budget by six point two, and capital expenditures were lower than budget by eight point seven. Both of those capital items, both the funding side and the capital expenditure side, truly was driven by timing. So once again, on the revenue side, we received grant money sooner and faster than we expected, and on the capital expenditure side, we spent slower than budget. So let's drill down a little bit on the operating budget. So the next page in the deck walks you through the budgeted numbers for the year on the operating side and the actuals for the year. So if you look at revenue external, you'll see on the budget side, we budgeted thirty-two point three million dollars for the year, and we actually came in at thirty-four, thirty-four point nine million dollars for the year. So once again, back to my earlier point, two point seven million dollars better than budget. And as you'll recall, just to remind you, we break out revenues as external revenues and internal revenues. So what would an internal revenue be? The general fund transfers money from the general fund to the police fund. That's revenue to the police fund, it's expense to the general fund, and you'll see that on the internal side, those typically will wash themselves, and in the audit process, the auditors will actually, in the consolidation process, they'll eliminate those transactions. So the focus should be to look at external revenue and external expenses on the operating side. So once again, just to highlight a couple of things. Sales tax revenues were slightly higher than budget, about a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars higher than budget. You'll also see utility billing was higher than budget. Fees, licenses, and rental and program revenue, so this is everything other than sales tax revenue and utility billing revenue. So this would be revenue that comes in for franchise fees, that comes in for community development fees, that comes in for the rush, rev, their revenues on the, on the rush. Anything that's sort of non-tax related falls into this bucket, and we were better by one point five million for the year. Interest income, you recall that over the last year or so, we have carved off some funds and put those funds in CDs while leaving other funds in our operating account where we earned three and a quarter percent in the operating account. And on the CDs, we earned anywhere from four point two up to four point, I think it's four point nine. So once again, from an income perspective, from the interest income perspective, we were better for the year than budget by about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Part of that is driven also not only from a rate perspective, but remember I told you that we were slow in spending on the capital side, so we kept the cash longer, so the cash sat in the bank longer, so you got more cash at a higher interest rate, which is driving part of that, that activity for us. I'll highlight the, the next section, you'll see transfers in and administrative allocation. Just to remind you what those things, those are internal transactions, internal transfers, that once again, in the consolidation process, the auditors eliminate those. And we are moving to an environment within the city. We've had to sort of force it to happen in Tyler, it will be much easier in our new ERP system. But for instance, administration allocation, that specific line item is revenue to the general fund, and it is labor that is allocated to the various operating departments and funds, and that labor then, quote, is paid for by those funds, and it comes back to the general fund as revenue. What'll happen in the future, so what happens is we, I'll use David and me as an example. Today, we book a hundred percent of our revenue, or our expense rather, we book it to the general fund, and then we turn around and allocate part of our expense to the various operating funds that we manage. So we've got an expense on one side that's being allocated to the various departments, but at the same time, we've already booked the expense once, and so the offset to that is revenue for the general fund. Going down the road in the future, what we're doing is, instead of going through the process where David and I are booked to the general fund a hundred percent, and then we expense part of that to the various operating funds, we're just gonna book it right to the operating funds from day one. And so you'll see direct and indirect expense that'll end up in the police fund, that'll end up in the fire fund, water, wastewater, et cetera. So instead of having this intermediate step where we book expense to the general fund, and then turn around and expense it out to the various funds, and then create this offset, this administrative fee that comes back to the general fund as the offset, that will go away. What this really does, it artificially increases our revenue, and it artificially increases our expenses. The two net out, and they get washed out in the, in the consolidation process, but it's also confusing because we have to talk about it. So one of the things we're doing is we're moving to an environment where that process is no longer occurring, and we're just gonna book, if, if ten percent of my, of my compensation should be allocated to the police fund, we're gonna book that ten percent to the police fund right off the bat. That's what this administrative fee is doing, it's capturing those expenses that should be funded, and they come back to the general fund as revenue. So you'll see here that there is another line item, transfers in from the general fund, and that is the, it's referred to in city vernacular as the amount that was frozen, that was agreed upon by the city in terms of funding to both police and fire. When the public safety sales tax initiative was put forth, the, the discussion, I wasn't here, but I think the discussion was, you only wanna, the, we're not only gonna use the, the public safety sales tax to fund police and fire, but we're gonna continue to use general fund monies to fund those, referred to as the frozen amount. So if you looked at the, quote, this frozen amount, this three point six million dollars that we budgeted is exactly what we allocated to both fire and police. There's also an additional amount in there of nine hundred and sixty-eight, or nine twenty-eight, that is just, once again, it's an accounting anomaly in the sense that we had money sitting in the general fund at the end of last year, monies that belonged to the fire department. Remember, the fire department used to be part of the general fund, we've made it a separate fund. Those funds then were transferred this year into, or rather, at the end of last year, transferred into the fire fund. From a, a process perspective, the, the process that we use, the Tyler technology that we use, sees that transfer as expense for the city, for the general fund, and revenue for the fire fund. It's not, it's a transfer of equity from one bucket to the other. We can't do it in our current software, so it gets treated as revenue going into the fire fund, expense coming out of the general fund, the two wash, but it shows up as, as revenue. So if you eliminated that activity, and it, you looked at the improvement in budget to actuals, if I took that three million dollars in total of revenue, but I adjusted for that arbitrary, artificial nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar transfer, then real revenues are really up two point one million dollars. And this is make, this will make more sense in a second when we talk about the expense side. So jumping down to the expense side, personnel costs, we came in better than budget, but part of this is a function of, we're making this transfer from a hundred percent being allocated to the general fund, and then we push stuff down to really getting things pushed into the right, to the right fund area. Net-net, if I, if, from a, from a personnel perspective, if you looked at total personnel costs direct, total personnel costs indirect, and netted that against the administrative fee, what you end up with is an increase in personnel costs over budget, about fifty grand. We basically came in on budget on the personnel side, which is what we would've expected because we had, we had dialed in our personnel costs pretty well. Remembering that personnel is our largest expense, and I've tried to give you some, some key indicators here, and personnel costs in total end up being about almost sixty percent of our total expense stream. So moving on down to the ex, the internal expenses, once again, personnel costs indirect, those get netted back out, transfers out, this is building maintenance, so it's, building maintenance charges the various funds to do work for them, it's an expense to the fund, it's revenue to building maintenance, it washes out in the consolidation process. The CIST, the CIST, think of it as a collecting pool. There's revenue that comes in from sales tax revenue into CIST. Then we assign that revenue to various projects within the operating funds. So we'll assign revenue to the Schuler Creek Trail in Streets. So for Streets, they see that as income, as revenue coming in to, to, to them. Whereas CIST sees that as expense because they're sending money out of that bucket. So once again, those two things wash. The goal is to, with the new ERP that's coming down the pike, to simplify a lot of this internal transfer stuff, so we don't even have to talk about it, because at the end of the day, it washes itself out. Net-net, if you look at the operating surplus, so once again, you'll see that transfer out from the general fund, the difference is nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, that's that scenario where I, I told you that there were money sitting in the general fund that we actually had to put into the fire fund. So it's expense for the general fund, it's revenue for the fire fund, the two wash. So we end up, if you wash those two things out, the, and look at the total operating expense variance of a negative seven fifty-nine. If you add nine sixty-eight back to that, or nine twenty-eight back to that, the variance is actually positive, it's a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars positive. So once again, remember I told you that on the revenue side, if you wash that one nine twenty-eight number through it, you ended up with a two point one million dollar positive variance, plus a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar positive variance on the expense side, gets us to our two point three million dollar positive variance on a consolidated basis. So from an operating cash flow perspective, the operating budget, we ended the year two point three million dollars better than we budgeted for the year. So taking that same logic and applying that logic to the capital budget, and we talked in our opening comments, we mentioned that the capital budget was better than budget by fourteen point nine million dollars. So circled in green is the variance between budget and the actuals, and now we're gonna talk about, how did we get there? So if you look at the sources of capital funding, so capital improvement, sales tax, grants and reimbursements, the wastewater grant from DNR. So remember, David negotiated two separate grants with the state, both twenty-five million dollar grants. One was a grant that was funded with ARPA dollars, and it required us to put in thirty percent, and the state was gonna put in seventy percent. There's also a general fund, or general revenue funding from the state, and the match was fifty percent, so fifty-fifty split between the state and the City of Republic. So that information, that, that revenue, that cash flow impact shows up in that wastewater treatment grant on that third line down, and you'll see from a budget perspective, we budgeted to receive two point, or twenty-eight million and change, we actually received thirty, a little over thirty-six million dollars for the year. So either we had a bad budget number, we just didn't expect to receive that money as quickly as we received it, and we just didn't have the right intelligence built into our forecast when we built the budget, or in fact, forecast when we built the budget, or in fact, the money came faster than we expected. We built the right budget based on the data we had, but we received monies on the 70-30 grant and also the 50-50 grant, and it came much quicker than we expected. As a result, the funding on that specific line item, we were $8.4 million better on an actuals basis in terms of cash flow coming into the city than we actually budgeted for for the year. So once again, it's going to, wow, that's great, $8.4 million. It's a timing issue. It's, the money is just getting to us quicker. The money pool, the ceiling didn't change. We're still only going to get $50 million from the state. It's just, it just ended up on our bank account much quicker. So, and so then moving on down, we also will take, you know, we're going to use cash from our balance sheet. From an unrestricted perspective, we're also going to use cash from our balance sheets from a restricted perspective. You just net all those components together. From an inflow perspective, we're $6.2 million better than budget on an actuals basis. Then on the capital side, expenditures were budgeted at $62.5 million for the year, and over on the left-hand side in that little box, I've given you the big items. So the wastewater plant obviously is the big item on the capital side, almost $52 million budgeted for the year. Schuler Creek was budgeted at half a million dollars, The Rush at four and a half million, JR Martin. By the time we did the budget amendment, we knew that we were not going to spend the full $2 million amount on the JR Martin. We were actually going to spend, we only spent about $120,000 in the year. And then there's a variety of other projects that made up the difference of 5.5 million. So that's, that's the budget side, but on an actual side, we actually only, we only spent $53.8 million. And that's primarily driven by the fact that from a budget perspective, once again, we spent less on the wastewater plant than we thought we were going to spend. So either the intelligence we had early on in the budget process had us spending them, as we're gathering information from Burns and Mack, either they were overly aggressive in how they thought they were going to roll out the wastewater plant, or we just captured the data incorrectly, or what they forecasted was correct. They're just slow in getting the project off the ground and getting the work done. Whatever the reason is, we're better off by $8.7 million for the year, budget to actual. So on a consolidated basis, we look phenomenal on the capital side. We say, hey, wow, we're $14.8 million better off, and we were $2.3 million better off on the operating side, so in total, we're $17.2 million better than budget. All very good news, but 14.2 million of that is truly timing, because we're not going to get any more grant money than 50 million. It just came quicker and we are going to spend $140 million on the wastewater plant. We're just spending it slower. So the wastewater plant, I thought I'd spend a little time just talking about funding and timing, because it is the largest project that we're working on by far. So I put together this chart. It seems simple to me, but let me just walk you through it. So what I tried to do is say, let's look at how we've spent monies by year and by funding source. So in the year 2022, we spent $4.6 million and it was funded with the Series 22 bond money. And that's all we spent in '22 on the wastewater plant. In '23, we spent $17.6 million from the Series 22 bond offering and nothing from anyplace else. But in '24, we spent $21 million of the Series 22 debt, and we started spending ARPA money in '24 to the tune of $22.4 million. So let's step back and talk about the Series 22 debt for, 2022 debt for a second. Remember, we issued 40, we're going to pay back $45.5 million. And we issued that debt at a time where the interest rates that were embedded in the offering were actually better than where the market was, so we actually issued that debt at a premium. So we got $3 million more than the face amount of the debt, because for instance, let's just say rates were at 3%, but we were going to pay three and a quarter as part of the offering. For somebody to get three and a quarter as part of the offering, they needed to pay us more than the face amount of the bonds. That was the premium. So we actually brought in $48 million, a little over $48 million. But remember, about five and a half million of that 48 million went to do what? Fund this building. So that's how we get from 48, less five, down to the $43.4 million of Series 22 bond offering debt, because, and it's gone. We've spent every dime of it, and I've had questions in the past saying, well, I thought we borrowed 45.5. Well, we actually borrowed 44.5 and got $3 million of premium on top of that, but then we used five and a half million of that for the building. ARPA money, we had received through the end of last year, $22.4 million. So in total, at the end of last year, for this specific project, we had spent, we had spent $65.8 million that had been funded either with the Series 22 debt or had been funded with ARPA money from DNR. Then if you look forward in '25, we're going to spend, so it'll kind of go in this order. We'll spend the remainder of the ARPA money, the first 25 million that we received from DNR. So that two and a half million is going to be spent first. As a matter of fact, we've already spent it. So the 25 million from DNR that was ARPA funded, we've received all 25 million and we've spent all 25 million. On the general revenue side, we're going to spend 25 million in this year, the general revenue grant, so it's a 50-50 grant. I can tell you that as of right now, we've, I think we've got about, we've received about $14 million of that grant this year, and we've spent a couple of millions, so we've got about 11 million, and we still have some monies to go. And I've got another chart on that later on. So in total, what's projected is we're not going to spend any Series 22 debt in the out years because we've already spent it. We've already spent most of the ARPA money, so we're only going to spend two and a half million this year. We'll spend all of the general revenue money next, after that. That will all happen in this fiscal year, and then we will start spending on the SRF debt. The SRF debt, as you know, we've got a $50 million approval, so it's just sitting there waiting. The nice thing, it gives us time to continue to lobby the state for more money, and so if we get another grant potentially, then we will have less to fund on the SRF debt. So net-net, look at the bottom, you can see the totals. This is how the project is currently projected to be funded. 43.4 million from SRF, from Series 22 debt, another 44.7 million from the SRF, 25 from ARPA, 25 from general revenue, gets us to our total of $138 million, which says that this project is 64% funded with debt and 36% funded with grant money.
Bob, quick question. On the 25 million that we got left, will we spend the remaining 25 million before June 1st?
We'll be pretty close.
Yeah, I need to know, all the reason I ask is from a reapproach perspective is that I did not ask for a reapproach, so it'd be one of those things that it's not appropriated for the following year. I just want to, oh, actually, it's by June 30th we have to spend it.
We'll be pretty close.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be pretty close. So the next page, David's kind of a good straight man on this, because the next page kind of takes that concept and looks at cash sources and uses through the end of last year, and this is another way to sort of slice and dice the data. So think of it as inflows and outflows. So the inflow, through the end of last year, we had received $43.4 million of SRF debt. As we just talked about, we've spent it all, but we received it. We also had received $25 million of ARPA money. And by the end of last year, sitting on our books, we had $11 million of monies that were funded through the general revenue. We've received, since then, we've received another couple of million, but we spent another couple of millions. So today, we're sitting with about $11 million of that general revenue funding source, and at the end of last year, we would have said, hey, we've got $13 million to go on that, on that grant. We've actually received a couple of million of that 13, and we spent a couple of million of that 13. So net-net, if we were looking at it today, we would have about $11 million to go on the general revenue source, and to David's point, we will spend $11 million between now and the end of the year, I mean, the end of June, at which point, we will start drawing on the SRF money. So let's take all of that and let's distill it down and talk about the resolution that was approved last July with regards to Budget Amendment 1. And Budget Amendment 1 said, and we went through fund by fund by fund by fund, if you recall, in that, in that resolution, and it totaled up to $95.3 million in terms of operating, not operating, and capital expenditures. The only thing we don't do is we don't set a target for CIST, because CIST is really just monies in, monies out. So it's not an operating fund, it's a source of collecting tax revenue and then assigning that tax revenue to various operating funds. So the comparison here is $95.3 million on a budget basis, this information is coming from all the data we just talked about, versus $87.3 million. So this gets us back to we're $7.9 million better on a consolidated basis than budget. So if you think about, we're better, we were better off on the revenue side by about 7 million, but we're, or actually about 3 million bucks, but we're better off on the capital side by about 14.3 million. And if you net all that out, if we just look at the expenditure side and take the revenue piece out of it, the expenditures are $7.9 million less than what we budgeted for the year. So technically, we've met the obligation. But once again, I want to remind us that we've met our budget obligation. Matter of fact, we've significantly, our results are significantly better than our budget, but it's, but the big lion's share of that is because of the timing on how we're spending the wastewater money. So I want to make sure that we, we keep that in the back of our mind, because, just because this year's better, guess what? Next year could be worse. It's all going to wash out in the process. Now, we will budget next year appropriately, so the budget, when I say worse, it's going to be, it's going to be worse than our expectation if we had set the budget today. By the time we do budgeting for next year, we'll take that in consideration. But the fact that we're better off this year by $7.9 million is truly a timing issue, and some operating savings also. The real, the real, on the operating side, the big kicker, remember, is that revenue was better by 2.3 million, but revenue's not figured into the resolution. We only look at the expenditure side from a resolution perspective. But let's just take the general fund, for instance. We're showing 8,999,777 negative, so that's capital expenditures plus operating expenditures. That's how much we were going to spend. We're going to spend $9 million. We spent 9.2 over budget. Well, actually, remember, $928,000 of that number is an internal transaction, and so if I back that out, we're actually better off by $630,000 at the general revenue side. So net-net, my message is, this is all good news. The operating is also, the city is all good news. The capital budget is good news also, but it's a timing issue. It's not a fundamental change in the financial economics. Quickly through city sales taxes, actuals for '22, '23, and '24. So if you look at totals, '22 of 12.952 million, '23, 12.984, and '24, 13.4. I've given you a calculation of year-over-year growth. So '24 over '23, actuals to actuals, we have an increase of 3.5% in sales tax revenue, whereas all during the year, we kept telling you, revenues are flat, revenues are flat, revenues are flat, or they're up 1%. They were, but that was compared to budget, not compared to actuals in 2022. So there is, once again, there is good news in that information in that we did see real revenue growth, '23 to '24. Then drilling down a little further, looking at cash, looking at cash in '23 versus cash in '24. So the expectation would be that our cash from '23 to '24 does what? It goes down. We're spending cash on a variety of things, but predominantly on the wastewater plant. So the wastewater plant is eating up our cash, and as a result, we're seeing that cash drop over time, which is one of the things that is driving our interest income, because it's dropping, but it's not dropping as fast as we thought it was going to drop. We're not spending the money as quickly. We're hanging on to the cash longer. So if we had looked at this cash chart a year ago on the budget side, the expectation for '24 at the end of the year would be a lower cash number than we actually are living with today. But once again, it's a timing issue. We're going to spend it. You've seen this chart a number of times. This is our current debt schedule, showing debt outstanding. So at the end of last year, of the end of '23, we had $61.8 million of debt outstanding. At the end of '24, we were down to $59.5 million. And during the year, we had principal paydowns of $2.7 million allocated, as you see here, and we also had, and this is a bit of an anomaly, we also had an advance of $384,000 on the SRF debt. And you're like, I thought you said we hadn't drawn on the SRF debt yet. We haven't drawn the SRF debt to fund the capital program, but we had $385,000 of lawyers' fees, underwriting fees, issuance fees, and so because the SRF debt is an interest rate of 1.26, I chose to pay for it with that money as opposed to taking money out of the bank that's currently earning three and a quarter, up to 4% a year. That's why you see a balance on the SRF debt. And then the second section to the right, it's just walking you through the debt service for the year. So principal, which ties back to our number, plus interest, plus any sort of fees and adjustments, and there are some loans that have monthly fees associated with them, which gets us to our $5 million of debt service for the city, 424. Remember back from page, let's see, where was it? I think it was page 20, or page, yeah, page, page three, on the operating expense side, we have debt service, and there's also some lease payments in there, is why it doesn't tie to the penny, but debt service for the city is about 19% of our total expense structure. And when we add the SRF debt at full extension, that number is going to become more like 20, using today's expense numbers, that's going to be about 23.5% to 24% of our total So if I look at this, what am I trying to draw from here? Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to look at the magnitude of the debt that's currently outstanding, because there's no SRF debt, really. I mean, the fees and legal costs are really irrelevant, but within But within two years, that number's going to be forty-five million bucks, on top of the fifty-nine that we currently have today. So with that, I go to this debt service chart. And this debt service chart just shows you by loan and by year, what the debt service is for each one of the obligations we have. And I actually want to focus, it's kind of hard to see, but if you look at twenty-five, I want to talk about twenty-five for a second. In twenty-five, our total debt service for the year will be, this year, four point nine million dollars. But we're also, this year, we're paying off the Series 2017 debt, which is the water projects, the Walmart Miller project, the park projects, the community center. We're also paying off the excavator and dozer, and we will be within a half a year's payment of the fire truck. We're going to go ahead and pay that last remaining. So we're going to spend three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars on principal repayment this year, but everything from the fire truck to the left goes away next year. So that frees up three, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year of debt service that we've been paying on for the last few years. The nice thing about that is as we draw down on the SRF debt, that three fifty, so the SRF debt, if I use windage and elevation and do the full fifty million dollars in terms of availability and amortize that over the twenty-five-year period, SRF debt's going to cost us about one point three, one point four million dollars a year. It's going to be nice to have this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to offset against that. So debt service-wise, we're only talking about an incremental, only million dollars of incremental debt service, once this is paid off. So the story is good. Operational, from an operation perspective, we had a great year. And once again, from the capital perspective, it's just an issue of timing. We are going to spend it. The nice thing is, we've kept the cash longer, and therefore, our interest income is higher. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Do we have any questions?
So do we ever show, and we talked about this before, you know, some year-to-year comparisons, now that we're getting consistent data in there to kind of show the growth over like the last five years or the changes? Is that something we're able to do?
Absolutely. Are you looking specifically at sales tax revenue, any property tax revenue?
Yeah, I'm interested to see like, you know, year-to-year growth of, you know, we're up eight percent before, oh, you're on the external side, just comparable. I mean, I'm always interested in increased debt, but if you look at like the debt service, I call it debt service coverage from year to year, since, you know, things have increased, it's, as you grow, I think percentages are good to see to compare, right?
Right, right.
Because, you know, half a billion dollar budget versus a hundred million dollar budget, the numbers look a lot different, but the percentages should show. So I just think that we're in quite a bit better financial situation than we were five, six, seven, eight years ago, and it's kind of tough to track it, because the numbers are so different.
And one of the things that we're looking forward to with our new ERP system is, in fact, to build that dashboard, to be able to show those comparative metrics over a number of years in the past, graphics, charts, graphs, et cetera. Where today, a lot of the stuff that we do entirely, we had to dump it into Excel and do everything by hand. So the answer to your question, Eric, yeah, we'll, we're going to get there, and especially with the new Sage Intact solution that's coming down the road. We'll be able to build, for instance, a council dashboard, and we can identify KPIs that you're interested in seeing, that maybe, you know, maybe the stuff that I want to see, you don't care about, but we can build a very specific KPI of five years of historical information on sales tax revenue growth, five years of historical information on compensation growth in the city over time. Well, we can do all of those things. You and I, though, have talked a lot about this in the past. For us, it's really about, for me, it's about net operating cash flow. At the end of the day, cash is king. So in the private world, cash drives value. And the more cash flow you can generate in the future, the more valuable the asset or the project that you're talking about is. So one of the things we want to do is be able to show what that cash flow looks like year-over-year, and would be interesting to go back and take some old budgets and kind of do the same sort of analysis, to see how our thinking has changed over time. That's a deeper project, but I think we'll have the capability of doing that, once we get Sage in place.
Thanks. Great question, great answer. Any other questions from council? Mr. Cameron?
I just have a comment, I guess, of historical value on the debt. There's probably three of us in the room that will remember this, and probably Mr. Harder, Mr. Wilson, but the 2017 Series debt was the lifeline that kept the city afloat. We refinanced debt, because we had, those that recall, we did that 2017 budget, like two thousand dollars, because we did the admin, we had to reallocate where the funding went. But refinancing that debt, which, when seeing the Walmart Miller Road, I don't remember when that was built, but it's been quite some time. But if you recall, those that would not recall, there was a, what was it, chief, a ninety-one fire truck was still, we owed eighty-six thousand on a truck that we didn't even use anymore. We had the body cams for the police department were financed, so to even have body cams on the officers, had to be leased, was on that same sheet. And so working with Stiefel, I never want to lose sight that there is debt that we had to use, or we restructured. So to see it coming off the books eight years later is nice. But never forget the lifeline that it provided for us from a cash perspective, but I appreciate staff and Bob working on that, on those efforts. The other thing I want to draw attention to, that I also want to commend, that Bob will quickly, it's hard to commend staff for what they've done, but the money that we've gotten through the state is severely overlooked from one perspective. We've got fifty million dollars, but we were the first one to the state to get money and to write the process. We were the organization that was pushing, because we were so far ahead, that they didn't even have processes at the state level to handle our submittals for our money. So I'm glad to know that we got eight million dollars in the bank that's sitting here, where most people would still be working on the process to get it. If you've ever worked on a grant to receive those funds, it's not always easy to get your money in here. So I commend the staff, Burns and Mack, Trent, everybody, even Steffi, who was working with us before, and all those that was doing the work to get our funding. They got the processes in place for us to get our money quickly, because I know we were ahead of the curve. So I know why we've got our money so much faster, and sometimes it gets overlooked. But dealing with a grant process was very difficult, especially ARPA. But it could be a lot worse. We could be still sitting there waiting for our money. Because I know that, what did we wait, Karen, eighteen months to get the first check? Yeah. So Bob, great job. Overall, I just want to draw attention to some of those things, why we have money in the bank from those funds, is our processes are wired pretty tight to get our funding as we submit our requests.
Yep.
Great job.
Mr. Gerke, one more question.
One more, I promise. The, you know, I know it's tough to show like balance sheets, not a business on there, but like, you know, is there a way to show what we're getting for our debt? You know, like David's talking about earlier, did we structure debt to basically cash flow? You don't get assets. We've had assets, the building rush like that. I mean, I don't know how the best way to show that, it's not the same as a business balance sheet.
It's a great question. And, you know, and technically governmental funds by themselves don't have balance sheets. But yet, when you do a consolidation, suddenly out of the ether, a balance sheet appears, which is always, from a guy coming from a non-government world, I'm like, this makes absolutely no sense to me. So what we will be doing in Sage Intact is we will be building shadow balance sheets by fund. So for instance, the police fund, we ought to have, the police cars should be on the police shadow balance sheet, and the fire trucks should be on the fire balance sheet. They're not. They're on this consolidated balance sheet that lives out here. As opposed to the proprietary funds, the water and wastewater, they have their own balance sheets. But the way GAZBIE works, which, once again, this drives me crazy, we should be able to create a balance sheet by fund, and then at the end of the year, roll those five or six balance sheets together, and that becomes the consolidated balance sheet for the governmental funds. That's the direction we're moving. Today, we don't have that.
Yeah. As we get to more data, I think it'll be interesting to show, I think, to the public of two, of like, you know, you have the balance sheet side, the income side, but then the debt is being used for things to better the community, not to patch a shortfall of cash flow, I guess.
Right, or we're not giving somebody a raise and using debt to fund operating. We're using debt to fund capital investment that is creating infrastructure or creating additional, potential additional revenue for the city. You're putting capital in the rush. So we've seen a significant increase in revenue last summer over the prior year's revenue for the pool, and that's a return on investment of utilizing that eight million dollars that we stuck in the expansion for the pool. So yes, we're getting there.
Thank you, Mr. Gerke. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Any additional questions from council? We're moving on. Thank you, Mr. Ford, and thank you to staff for all the hard work that went into that. Thank you, David Cameron. Our next topic, who's taking on the streets this afternoon?
Comes Angel.
All right, we have Angel. Angel, this afternoon for 2025 Street and Sidewalk Plan.
Good afternoon, City Council. Angel Falik, engineer for the city, working under the ComDev Department. This afternoon, I'll be discussing our, as soon as we get it up. Thank you, Michael. Okay, this afternoon, I'll be discussing the city's street overlays and paving program, among other things such as sidewalks and striping. Okay? Just to give you an idea of previous budgets throughout the years, twenty-two through 2024, our project budget this year moving forward of seven hundred and fifty thousand through 2029, again, funded through the street fund. Just to recap, some recent improvements made from 2024 through, twenty-two through 2024, approximately seventy-seven thousand linear feet of streets improved, inclusive of the Bells parking lot and the Heinz and Lynn roundabout. Our plan for this year is to improve approximately twenty-six thousand linear feet of sidewalk. Okay, I'd like to highlight a few recent projects. The storage lane at Lyon and Sweeney Elementary School, grading work and subways prepared by city crews, and then put the pavement portion being contracted out to a contractor. This is the Bells parking lot area. Again, we'd like to thank the city council for approving this and allowing this parking lot to be paved, completed in twenty-four. And this is a recap of last year's paving projects. We have an example of a city street before, the final product of overlay. This typically involves a two-inch mill of any surface defects, along with a two-inch overlay.
Angel, where was that at?
This one was at Rosewood. That's Boston, in the middle right there, and that's Farmer 156.
Twenty-one long street. Gary Street, actually.
Okay, I'd like to give you an overview of our process, how we, number one, identify and select roads. The way we do it right now is just to determine the condition visually, and this is just to provide sample sizes. We also consider budget and constraints. Use objective tiebreakers, such as street type, traffic loading, location, citizen concerns. Okay, that's the first step in the process, and then next step is to advertise for bids. This particular project has been posted. We met with potential contractors last week. Bids will be open on March nineteenth, and we hope to select a contractor for this project. We'll be presenting that at city council on April first. Our hope is to begin construction in May twenty-sixth, after schools let out, with plan for completion August fifteenth, prior to schools reopening. Again, I'd like to mention that we've included third-party testing for any of the materials being used during this paving overlays, as well as our new street closure process. We've brought in our, the contacts for that street closure groups, inclusive of the school, they're in some, they will be in summer, so, but we've also included emergency services, just, you know, all the individuals that should be notified of any street closures, as well as residents. And that's posted through our Facebook website. Okay. So right here, you'll see green, yellow, orange, and red dots on our GIS map. What this is, is GIS software. We utilize an app called Quick Capture. This is easily accessible on the iPad or phone. City crews were able to go around the city, and this allows them to survey and document different locations on different streets. They include notes of any road conditions, and this is, you know, just data that we can see on a map, really helpful, useful, at different areas in the city. Right here is the southern part of town. Some locations may not be very accurate, this is just a zoomed-out picture, but you're able to zoom in, select that particular dot, and get more information on that location. And it's been a really useful tool for the street department to utilize in collecting this data, and it's been very useful for us to, in selecting streets and considering. I'd like to move on to our pavement rating conditions. So street crews and staff, as you can see here in the pictures, little to no structural cracking, and with maybe some minor improvements which may be needed. Some examples of that shown, Farmer 115, maybe a couple of small patches that might be needed. Again, Maple Street from Elm to Hampton, which was completed in twenty-four. Texas Avenue from Hein Street to Jester Ave, there are some patches required at intersections where they tie into Texas Avenue. And then with newer subdivisions, we hope that the pavement conditions are good. Lake Chula Ridge, Phase Two, a newer subdivision in the city. Okay, the next rating condition is fair. Some examples of this, on the left, we have a trench or utility trench repair, some distress, no major structural failures on the asphalt at those joints, some cracked steel pavement, faulting of joints or cracks, so, you know, when you see the pavement popping out due to freeze and thaw, and other water infiltration. Some examples of this are provided to the left. Hampton from US sixty to Elm, it may be a potential for crack sealing. And again, these are notes that our street crews can easily document as they find something new on a city street, or they haven't driven by this area for a certain time. You know, they can put these notes in there, we can verify it. The next rating criteria, four. So this, you see a more serious distress, joint deterioration, alligator cracks, you see on the top left, along the edge of the driveway, spot failures, rutting, shoving, or slippage. This is where you see, you know, tremendous amount of alligator cracking, and typically when you have that, your pavement is pretty compromised due to water infiltration and drainage problems. Okay, the last criteria on the list is bad. Right here, we have, you've probably seen this in a few areas in the city. Again, we have multiple utility repairs, patches, we have longitudinal cracks, block cracking, alligator cracking. If you need a description of any of If you need a description of any of these defects, you can, maybe in the office, and we can go through some pictures and stuff, like, we can go through it. Right here on the bottom right, we have asphalt popping out of the surface. So this, our examples of bad streets, we've considered visually through these surveys and using Quick Capture. The street department has been really helpful with that, on that front. Okay, in addition to pavement condition criterias, we consider project constraints, and that can be, you know, ongoing projects within the city or proposed developments. Some examples here we consider as constraints are the ongoing wastewater treatment plant construction. Again, West Street, just by the wastewater treatment plant, is heavily used by construction traffic, and, you know, the plan is not to overlay that because it will continue to be used. We expect wear and tear on that particular street. Another example is CIP 7. If you've driven by there, it's a little rough because of the recent forced main installation on eastbound lane of 174. There is a plan to repave that this spring. If you haven't heard about the Morris Park Stormwater Project, you all voted to approve that. We appreciate your vote. That project involves stormwater drainage design. Just west of West Logan Street, there have been some issues with stormwater drainage just adjacent to a storm detention pond. The amount of stormwater conveyance through that street and has been really rough on this street because of the alligator cracks, water infiltration. It's just a really bad situation for that particular street. So until those stormwater improvements are made, you know, the plan is to just hold off on the overlay of this street. MM Expansion, again, any adjacent roads to this, the proposed expansion, may be considered for tying in, and again, heavy construction traffic, that's, these are some constraints we consider. West Hein Street, proposed water main replacement on West Hein Street. The plan is to hold off on that with, until that's completed, it's been designed and completed. The NI Pilot Program, which you'll hear about here shortly, West Strahl Street. Okay, and considering all the data from our Quick Capture survey, pavement rating conditions, project constraints, and budget, we've selected the following streets. Five local streets, three collectors, and four arterial roads, approximately 26,000 linear feet. Again, this plan is, is just a rough estimate. Depending on the estimates we receive, this may or may not be revised. Okay, here you have Brookline, Farmer 160, Farmer 156 to the top left, Kansas Avenue, where some street improvements were made along O'Neill. We have Miller, portion of Lynn, and then Alexander Street, which is really bad right now with all the alligator cracking. Harrison, just by the middle school. Clyburn Street, a portion of those streets were previously improved. And then we have just east of West, Phelps College and Summit Street. Okay, treatment options for this year's overlay plan is typically milled two inches off the top layer, any surface defects, and then an additional two-inch overlay on that. Sometimes where surface defects aren't too bad, they don't have to go that, that deep. Again, it's functional, efficient, adaptable, and cost-effective. It also can extend the life. A good overlay can extend the life of 10 to 15 years. It's also completed very quickly with limited traffic disruption, so. The estimated amount of this is $92 per ton. That was based on the median price last year's bid. We're hoping that that drops down this year. Okay, here's just an example of the asphalt overlay process. On the left, on the right picture, you'll see the milled section of road, and then on the right is the two-inch overlay. This is downtown Olive Street. Okay, the next treatment option is heavily supported by our street crews, the street department, crack sealing. This typically works for anything less than a half an inch. City crews crack seal streets each winter. The hope is to seal those cracks before spring rain or, or snow. And also, the, the sealant expands in the summer, so it helps with any water infiltration through existing cracks through, on pavement. And the average cost is less than $1,000 per block. Can we drop that price for it? Maybe drop that price a little bit. Okay, some treatment options, as you can see the crack seals here. Okay, just a list of completed roads. Again, 23,000 linear feet, and 23, about 30,000 linear feet. And then 24, about 24,000 linear feet. Okay, to go into striping. Our focus has been set on maintenance. In previous years, we've had intergovernmental agreement with Green County to pay, to stripe some of our streets. Unfortunately, due to increased costs, we have not been able to partner on that front. Another idea for maintenance would be through Public Works. They perform mostly crosswalks. So Frisco Square, I know there's plans to work on the crosswalks at Civic and Frisco. And then there was a request for Miller Road Crossing, just west of the Rush Aquatic Center, Miller Road, and South Cully. And then previous crosswalks that were striped by the Public Works Department, Lynn's, Lynn's pedestrian crosswalk and the Hein Street crosswalk just west of Price Cutter. Again, our plan is to maintain these stripes through asphalt overlay projects. We include, we request contractors include in their bids price for striping on any roads that has, that have existing striping. So as far as maintenance, these are, have been kind of our main steps in maintaining our striping in the city. Okay, for, in addition, if you can see on your left, that's Boyce Subdivision, recent connections on Republic M and US 60. Striping is required on any intersections within MODOT right-of-way, and we, we also requested that these streets be striped, center line, turn lanes within the city right-of-way. The cost for this is approximately 20 cents to $1.30 per linear foot.
Angel, do we do the striping ourselves, or is that contracted?
That's contracted. We don't do that in-house. We do perform crosswalks.
Okay.
So major center line striping, edge striping is contracted.
Thank you.
Okay, if we can talk about sidewalks for a little bit. Just an overview of our sidewalk system. Since joining the city, approximately 18 miles of sidewalk have been constructed. Based on the 2016 inventory, we had approximately fixed 56 miles of sidewalk. So in total, we're estimating about 74 miles of sidewalk currently in the city. For this, our focus has been grant opportunities, and we have really excellent staff in Trent and the finance department in applying for these grants. Some of these programs, like Reconnecting Community Program. Fortunately, we did not get that grant. Auto, the bike pedestrian program. We received funding for the Shuler Creek Trail, if you haven't been on that trail. In the works, hopefully completed by May 1st, 2025, 1.7 miles of trail, and we intend to apply for future projects. Safe Streets for All, we received funding for an ADA transition plan, and this plan is our, our hope is for this plan to identify sidewalk gaps and help staff prioritize areas that we need to improve, where we need to make connections, any repairs to ADA noncompliance. Okay, our main sources of funding for any sidewalk additions and replacements have been through development projects or budgeted planned capital improvement projects. Okay, some recent additions, we, we went over the Boyce subdivision, about 2,600 linear feet of sidewalk. Stone Creek Leg, about 640 linear feet of sidewalk. Just point out, we, our Public Works crews did perform the storm work, base work, subgrade on this project with the concrete, flat work, and pavement being contracted out. Newer subdivisions in the city, Greenfield Estates, about 5,000 linear feet of sidewalk. There's Old Savannah, 3,000 linear feet of sidewalk. Wilson's Valley Phase Two, just north of here, 4,900 linear feet of sidewalk. Harper Ridge Phase Two, just north Maine, about 2,300 linear feet of sidewalk, where they connected their subdivision to the Emerald Valley Phase subdivision just to the south. Some planned development and sidewalk, street connections. Brookside Estates currently undergoing construction, about 5,000 linear feet. Main Street connection would be Gray Street. We do have sidewalks on each side with potential connections for residents to walk through the city. On the west, we have Sterling Meadows, and on the east, we have Valley Trails. This planned development, just north of 174, western part of the city, construction is ongoing, about 7,490 linear feet of sidewalk just adjacent to the Sandstone subdivision on the east and north of Kansas Avenue. There will be a connection at the street in Sandstone. Some other planned developments, Harper Ridge Phase Four, we touched on Phase Two here, that sidewalk extension you can see on the left, just east of Farmer Road 81, about 2960 linear feet of sidewalk. Again, this subdivision has been slowly moving into phases, Phase Four being its next phase. Tiger Creek subdivision, just down, down south of here, Heinz and ZZ. The plan is for 6,800 linear feet of sidewalk. We will have a sidewalk extension along Heinz with a plan to start in 2025. Okay, some internal planned projects are the Frisco Square sidewalk replacements, approximately 70 linear feet. There have been some issues with settling due to stormwater. Just in front of that roundabout there, where the roundabout parking, that is planned for spring 2025. A highly requested sidewalks extension on West Hein Street. Few residents within this area have requested for sidewalk connections to 174 and to Main, Main Street, about 2,350 linear feet. The challenge with this project is the narrow right-of-way with limited space for construction of a sidewalk. Right-of-way acquisition is needed, along with some u-utility relocation. This has been a challenge for this particular stretch of sidewalk. On the other side, Heinz Corridor, East Hein Street, about 6,600 linear feet of sidewalk from Oakwood Ave all the way to ZZ. Again, we have that development go in, so that will kind of shorten that length of sidewalk that we need to, to plan and install for. The Iron Grain Lane Project, construction ongoing. Our crews installing stormwater lines, preparing the base, subbase for the pavement, which will be contracted out, about 4, 530 linear feet of sidewalk that will connect the apartments to the commercial area to the south. And then the planned Commercial Avenue widening. This will connect the Stone Creek Development to the New Republic Intermediate School, about 1,400 linear feet of sidewalk, with the road widening project that will be included as far as design, construction. Then the long-waited MODOT Project D, the, this project will extend from Hill Street to Highway 60 to Farmer 103 with a plan letting in October this year. That hasn't changed. Again, these are sidewalk extensions and, and replacements, just to cover a few developments that will tie in certain areas of the city. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions from city council?
I've got a question for you, Angel. Just going back to the one on South Kansas Avenue, it was like 16, I believe. On that road, it was a list of the overlay projects.
Uh huh.
Was South Kansas Avenue, was that a, a road overlay, or was that an improvement? I just got lost on what exactly.
That is currently planned for an overlay. We'll, we'll verify, sorry. Kansas is planned as an overlay. I know some areas may need to be milled that will be visited. There, there are a few transverse cracks in that area, so they typically trend, you know, provide transitional milling, and the plan is to mill out any defects in that area.
Sure. Yeah, that has to be a challenging road.
Yeah.
And so that goes just past, is that the, the railroad, O'Neill, I believe?
That's O'Neill.
Okay, so it goes past O'Neill is what you're planning. So basically, all of that really rough stuff is within that plan. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Gerke?
Budget-wise, see, we've kicked it up some, you know, like historically for 2022, budget's similar, less. Just kind of curious, like historically words, but I know we had, you know, a year in 2023, and then we kicked it, you know, kicked it back up, but I'm just kind of curious to the historical numbers before that, like the, the budget in that, those areas.
Before 20?
Two.
Okay. You know, I can, I don't really have that answer in front of me right now.
I can, I can answer. The, the question is, is it was, when do we do the ballot measure? 2020? So there was about $200,000 a year before the ballot measure because the motor fuel sales tax went to the police department, the 2020 ballot measure. So basically, there's about $200,000 a year that was used just to do maintenance. So there was no real funding, other than just, there was no funding mechanism. Like Oakwood and Heinz, that improvement on Oakwood was actually done through STBG urban money. That was not really even city street money to do it. So that was STBG urban, which is actually meant to be intersection improvements on state highways, but, so that's the last major street improvement that I'm, when I got here, was done through an STBG urban money. The rest of it was utilized in the PD. So when that ballot measure passed in 2020, I'm going to bet it was, I, I want to bet it was around $200,000 a year.
That, that sounds about right.
Yeah, I think it was about $200,000. That was mostly, that's what was left over after budget. So that's maintenance. There was no crack sealing machine and stuff like that. So all that's been added since 2020 when purchased. So the crack sealing gets lost because that's actually done a lot of preservation in a lot of projects that we weren't doing at all. So that's been a lifeline that's helped us a lot, is to get the crack sealing project done. But I'd say it's closer to 700, 800,000, depends on what state highways. And obviously, we paved the parking lot here, so that's not necessarily a street.
Yeah. So to be, to be fair to say, substantial budget, substantial more improvement the last four years compared to historically.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Cameron?
I would just like to point out on the project constraints, I just like the fact that it's being ran like, like a business. Identifying the areas that have the Identifying the areas that have the, the construction track or, or the repairs necessary. And I won't say what road this is, but it's not in the city, it's a local expressway that eastbound lanes, they were doing the concrete grinding on. And then they, at the same time, they painted the westbound lanes, striped the westbound lanes. So I just assumed that they wouldn't be grinding the westbound lanes. But when they got far enough east, they turned around and ground, concrete grounded the westbound lane, the brand new stripes. And it just really irritated me to see the waste being spent like that. So identifying these projects like this, great job for you all. It just, it shows that we're, we're taking care of the money that we're, we're handling, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any additional questions from City Council?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Felique, for bringing all that great information. I know roads is something that everyone, is probably something each one of us has a conversation on at least once a week. So I know not all the ones here, but we appreciate all of the hard work on getting us forward and, and all of the work that's happened in the last few years with progress and the sealing machine and everything else. Anything else to add, Mr. Cameron, before we move on?
I would just say that I know, I, I appreciate how the staff worked together on this. One thing about it is, is if it's in your ward, one thing about it is our staff can only see so much and they're, they're paying attention to it. If you have a street, our staff's not going to throw it to the top of the list, but what they will do, if you want them to look at it and you don't see it on the list, let them know because they've got the software, they're just, any place that we're not seeing, or the PD picks it up. I know that, that, we have people that turn in stuff to us all the time. And you want to see it on the list, let Angel or someone at least know that we, we have it, just so if a sign's missing, sometimes we don't see everything that's going on. It always helps us to know if you see something that we can take care of it. I know there's one on here, it was like seventy feet of sidewalk, I'm sure someone turned that into us. Alright, so thank you for bringing that stuff up and, and a job well done. But I, I agree, Councilmember Gerke, I appreciate you bringing that up because that's something that gets lost. I think we've probably done seventy thousand linear feet and probably the previous years, we hadn't done fourteen hundred linear feet. So I think the metric of what you're asking for is probably closer to fourteen hundred and fifty, fourteen hundred to fifteen hundred feet versus seventy-seven thousand. So thank the voters for making that happen, but also the staff for making that flex an awful long way. And while I have this moment, a lot of it is, and Karen knows this, the Heinz and Lynn Roundabout, the only thing that I, we as a staff look back on and the biggest regret is we could have bought the houses and would have delayed the project on the roundabout to probably deflect it out. It's probably one of those places where, where we hear the most complaint about the roundabout. They would have taken us probably another four years and we would have put all of our money on that project. I'm not saying it makes it right, but I think sometimes when you have to make decisions to do it back, you're like running it like a business. Looking back, you would, you don't want to say you're buying houses, but that's probably what should have happened to move that back to get all the turning radiuses. But I appreciate staff trying to make it go as far as they can, but I appreciate you bringing it in here. I think it was Councilmember Neil that wanted to hear more about it, so the more ideas you have that you would like for us to present or ask. I had no idea we had that many miles of sidewalk going in myself, so thank you for traveling through all those slides of all the sidewalk that's going in, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron, thank you, Mr. Felique.
Moving on to inflow and infiltration reduction pilot program.
I want to prep this for Stephanie, just because I, I know she's doing the work and thank you for doing it. For those that are watching this, again, we are, I, I'm fully aware, you're fully aware, that we're building, Bob told us about the wastewater plant. The very issue that's, that caused the problem for the city since nineteen ninety-seven was not the plant itself as much as it was the stormwater getting in there. So that's what's, that's the why behind this presentation and I'm looking forward to the work that this is going to do, so she can have it.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
I'm Stephanie Fitzpatrick Duncan, I'm an engineer who works in this building. We're going to be talking about our inflow and infiltration reduction program like David's talking about, specifically a pilot program that we have proposed to help address some INI. So to get kicked off, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about what is INI. When we're talking about inflow and infiltration or INI, we're talking about water in the sanitary sewer system. So once either groundwater or rainwater gets into the sanitary sewer system, we have to treat it like sewage. That means it's going through our pipes, it's taking up capacity there, it's getting pumped once or more than once to get to the treatment plant and then it's being treated at the treatment plant. So we see that come from a few different things, we'd see it come from inflow, which is storm connection, sump pumps, really anything that's a direct connection that's allowing that stormwater to get into the wastewater. And then we see infiltration and that comes more from broken infrastructure, so laterals, cleanouts, manholes. If those have cracks in them, rainwater and groundwater can get in. This is kind of an overview of what we see on a typical home, so we have our city sewer and then right at the connection to the city sewer is where it goes to the private side. So those homeowners maintain their private sewer laterals, the cleanouts, and that's all their responsibility to keep in good shape. So what we're seeing lately is the city has gone in and made several improvements to our infrastructure, to our manholes, to our city sewers and have gotten those up to code, where there's not cracks and we feel confident that the inflow is not coming from that side, but we're seeing still large numbers of inflow and infiltration that can be concluded are coming from the private side. Because that's not something that the city evaluates, it's not something we maintain, it's on the private home, homeowners to take care of those infrastructure. But ultimately, the water that's getting in on the private side is feeding into the public side and causing issues for the city. So what we have proposed to address this, this issue is actually a pilot program. We've identified an area of town along West Charles Street, it's just south of US Highway sixty where we're seeing through flow data, a large amount of INI. And this makes sense with the age of the homes in the area and other data that we'll look at. And so we're proposing that we go in and replace the infrastructure on the private side. We have done extensive work on the public side in this area, so we know that the INI we're seeing is from the private side. So we want to go in and replace those service lines and replace the cleanouts and the other private infrastructure to benefit the city as a whole. That's our ultimate goal here is to reduce INI into our sanitary system because then we're paying less to pump it, we're paying less to treat it and hopefully see some return on investment. So this area includes thirty-four homes, so it gives us a really good small snapshot of the city and we can use the data that we get from this pilot program to scale decisions moving forward. Are we seeing the return on investment that we're anticipating for this pilot program that, you know, justifies doing larger INI reduction efforts across the city? So this is the area along Charles Street that when we're talking about the pilot program, this is what area we're talking about. It's in this area and they all feed to the same flow meter. So all of this flow is isolated in its own little system and every drop of sanitary sewage that's coming through these homes is going through our flow meter that we placed at the end of twenty twenty-four last year. So to give you a little more background of this area, these homes were built in nineteen fifty-eight and we have a little bit different construction standards now than we're back in nineteen fifty-eight. Most of the pipes there are clay pipes, so think of almost like a clay flower pot. And if you're putting that in the ground, how easy that is to break and get cracks and get water in there. And that's what these pipes are made of, whereas today we would go in with this, some PVC that's a little bit more durable. We've also done smoke testing in this area, so when we did our large smoke testing effort several years back in the city, this was an area that popped up on that. And then we also CCTV'd all the lines in the city, that's when we're putting the camera in where we can identify cracks that we're seeing or any other issues, and again, this area was one that popped up on that data as well. And just to reiterate, the city has gone in and done multiple improvements in this area, is why we're very confident saying that this INI is coming from the private side. We've lined the mains in this area, we've identified and addressed point repairs, and then we've also lined the manholes along this street as well. So the area that you see highlighted here, that's the overall flow basin that flows to lift station four. So Charles Street is included in that and then it goes to lift station four where it's pumped again and it goes to the plant. So again, every ounce of water that's getting in on Charles Street is going through all of our piping and then getting pumped multiple times to get to the treatment plant, which, which is something we don't want. This area was also identified in the INI evaluation that Burns and McDonald did for us a few years ago. It was really highlighted through their efforts of field verification, flow monitoring and the hydraulic model that we have for our system that this area needs to be a high priority for reducing INI and it's causing a lot of INI into our system. So this data is just at a high level showing what one rain event can do for INI in Charles Street. So the top, the top data you're seeing is the flow meter, I'm sorry, the rain gauge at fire station one, which is not very far from our project area. And then the bottom is the flow through our flow meter at Charles Street. And you can see that typically flows on Charles Street are pretty low, so less than fifty gallons per minute, what you'd anticipate, anticipate seeing for a small neighborhood. But then when we're having large flow events, you can see the spikes follow the rain patterns very closely. And that's another indicator that we have that's showing that INI is coming from these rain events and is causing issues in this area. So there's a couple of things we want to do post-construction too, of just planning ahead for when this project is completed, is one, we want to make sure we're using data to make decisions. So we want to compare the flow data from before construction to after construction and seeing if we're seeing that decrease in INI like we would anticipate seeing. We also want to make sure that we're conveying data very clearly. There's a lot of different metrics that go into this and it can get very in the weeds very quickly. So we intend to have a dashboard that can clearly communicate what's going on and the big picture to not only council, but to, to our community as well. And then probably the most important part is after this project, we want to do a cost benefit analysis. Again, are we seeing the return on investment that we'd like to see to justify scaling up to produce INI in other places that we know are issues across the city? Or what does that return on investment look like and just inform decisions through the cost? To give you a little overview of how this program would operate, very first, at the next council meeting, we have on the agenda a public funds resolution. This is something we'll talk about in a little bit more detail on the next slide. But ultimately, the purpose of this resolution is to get city council's approval, or we'll be presenting to city council to authorize the use of public funds on private property. We've gone in and identified that this is coming from the private side, but we need this council's approval to expedite those funds. We will then post the invitation for bid, open bids and select a contractor. So this work will be contracted out to a third party to complete the work where we intend to start construction this summer and finish up by the end of the calendar year. So I really just want to talk a little bit more about our public funds resolution, since this is on the agenda, I believe, for the next council meeting. Our purpose of our program is to reduce INI into the public sanitary system and that's serving a benefit to our community as a whole. That will help reduce costs, it's reducing capacity issues with our treatment plant. And we all know the investment that's gone into our treatment plant, we just really want to make sure we're protecting that asset and utilizing it as best as possible. And that includes reducing INI before it gets to the treatment plant. So to do that, we have to go in and fix infrastructure on the private side and that's where we'll be asking our city council and making sure that we're authorized to do that. Another big part of this with working on private property is making sure that, you know, we have the consent of the homeowners. So we have a standard consent form that they, anyone would need to sign before we are doing any work on their property. And there's a couple of key items with that, so with this program, the city would be paying for the work. We're not asking these homeowners to incur an expense to correct this issue. We're, as part of this pilot program, taking that on and incurring that expense as the city. We also will keep the replacements outside the home, so just the service lines and the cleanouts and the external infrastructure. And so an important part of that is that the city is not going to be responsible for any maintenance or repairs after this installation. So after the completion of this work, it will go back to being maintained and operated by the private homeowner. We also want to make sure that before we get to the stage of asking for consent to get on anyone's property, that we're providing enough project information that we're communicating what's going on and the benefits of this program. So we intend to send out an initial letter outlining what the project is, the benefits of the project and how the homeowners in this area maybe have impacted and what they can kind of expect for next steps. So that'll also have our website page where they can go for more information. And then we'll have a public meeting in the neighborhood so we can really get face to face with the people being affected and make sure we're communicating, answering questions, things like that, before we get to the stage of asking them to sign an agreement to complete the work. I wanted to touch on real quick, some grant opportunities that have been identified by the finance department. So this project is eligible for CDBG funding. It's specifically for projects like this and it can reimburse up to five thousand dollars per household. But to qualify for those grant funds, you do have to have fifty-one percent of low to moderate income people living in that area. That's not data that the city has access to, that's not data that's publicly available. So as part of this project, in the consent form, we will be having an optional income survey to hopefully collect that data and qualify for grant funds. We did make the decision to keep that optional because we don't want someone to miss out or miss out on reducing INI because someone's not comfortable filling out their income information. To wrap up, I really just want to highlight the program benefits again. By reducing INI in this system, we are reducing the risk of sanitary sewer overflows and that benefits both the city and our crews going out to address those and also the homeowners who obviously don't want sewage backing up near or on their property. This will decrease the load on our system pipes and lift stations. Again, almost every gallon of INI is pumped at least once, a lot of times, multiple times before it's getting to the treatment plant. So that's a, a big load on our system that is not necessary. This will also increase the available capacity at our wastewater treatment plant. So every ounce of INI we take out into, out of the system is more wastewater we can put into the system. And then the purpose of the pilot program specifically is to really decide if these efforts are worth scaling up, if we're seeing the return on investment that we'd like to see and really just make data informed decisions moving forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from City Council?
I've got a question. Did you, I didn't see your hand, go ahead.
I just had an idea on the, the funding opportunity. Would that be something we could potentially check with the school system first, just to say, have you got income data for this area of town? Is it over this percent? Because they would already have captured that for students.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And then, because you don't, if you don't need actual addresses with it, they may be able to just provide you ads, sixty percent low income in that area.
Yeah, that would be great, we will definitely follow up on that because we definitely want to qualify for as many grant funds as possible.
And so this, this is, this isn't a sleeving, this is a complete replacement of the pipe from the sewer main at the T all the way to the connection at the house?
That's correct, so it'd be a full service line replacement with PVC pipe and then any cleanouts or anything associated with that as well.
The, the cleanouts that, I mean, or that are existing or that need to be put in the, the city, so this will be done by the city crews?
We will be contracting this workout.
Of contract?
For this pilot program.
Okay.
Any additional questions from City Council? Mr. Cameron?
Oh, go ahead.
What, are there any other high INI rates around the city that you've noticed or is this the highest?
This area has been identified as the most impactful in terms of the data we're seeing, but there are other areas of the city we're evaluating as well. And just the city as a whole, especially the older portions of town that have those clay pipes in the ground is where we're seeing the most INI come in.
Okay, so through this project program, it, it, moving forward, of course, you don't have the data, but is this going to be setting precedent for us to go through and foot the bill for these other places as well? Or is this the pilot and it's a one and done or?
I'll ask that. So this, yeah, the objective in this whole pilot program is, is there any value of going on the private side to identify, is there any value of fixing those problems? Is that really where the issue is at? So to put it in perspective, which we actually, I, I'm grateful because I asked for this data yesterday and she worked very quickly to get it for me today at six oh one this morning. But we've set up flow meters on these thirty-four houses after we've made all the improvements. So we tracked the rain event from last week that was what, one point six inches? And there was two hundred and seventy-seven thousand gallons of water from these thirty-four homes after the rain event that represented thirty-one percent of the vo- new volume at the wastewater plant. So we're actually narrowed down to where it is, like we know it's not our manhole, we know it's not our pipe, so where did that water come from? So now we're going to go in and replace these thirty-four pipes and say, test it again and say, now where's this water come from? Is it, you know, it's like trying to drill down, because if every house was ten thousand dollars, say it costs us ten thousand and not every new home has to be repaired because we got new homes going in. That's close, I think I did the math yesterday, it was like thirty-five million dollars. We just spent ninety million dollars to fix a stormwater issue at the wastewater plant. So this is literally saying, is it more cost effective to go out and fix the problem long term? And that's where, but going on private property was always, it's, you don't do that.
Right.
So this is like, this is a, it's not state of the art, other larger communities are doing it. But this is a good way to find out where the issue is. And then if we identify that that's the issue, as a city, we got a position we're going to have to take on private property because if your water line leaks and your water ma- or your water line to your house, we go from the meter to your house, you got to leak, you got to replace it. There is no mechanism for us to know if your line is leaking rainwater into our system. So if we identify through the pilot study that your house is leaking water in, we can go fix it and see the benefit of it. Then we have an issue as a community as whether to legislate and say, hey, you're responsible. So I do not see us going into the business of fixing private lines, but to identify the problem, we're going to go in and do a pilot study to say, is there any value to actually ramping up a program to say, citizen, if you're Is there any value to actually ramping up a program to say, citizen, if you're, or. In some situations, it's a great question, if you want to keep your sump pump hooked up to our line, you can pay an extra hundred dollars a month to have it. But if you want to, or just pump it onto the ground. Most people don't even know it's pumping into the sewer system, it's not intentional, we're trying to. Do something, just pump it on the ground, or some, we've got some that got their eavesbowed hooked straight to the sewer system.
Mine goes to the ground.
Remember the one over by your house that went right in their garage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anyway, so yeah, I I think this is a, because we're spending so much money to address. That I want the community, I want this council to know, the reason why we're still building the plant was because of the compliance order was over stormwater getting into the collection system. It wasn't a bad wastewater plant. It's, the wastewater plant can't handle all the stormwater, so it's going out of the plant, so they're saying either fix the plant or fix your pipes. So now we're got a chance to go fix it, and I'm telling you, if you can reduce thirty one percent on one thirty four house deal, that's. Three hundred fifty thousand dollars well spent in the community right off the top.
I agree.
And so what Bob and them will do with the new system is they'll actually show you how long that asset now is going to be extended at the plant. Because you reduce the amount of water going to it, so with each repair of water going in, it actually extends the life of the big, the mothership now, the wastewater plant, so. Great job. Angel, you all did a fantastic job, Stephanie, you did a great job of presenting that information. I know you guys were probably up very early nervous to have to present in front of, but you did a great job.
Questions?
Any further questions? No more questions, thank you very much, excellent work, as David said, um we're moving on, is there?
There's a staff report.
Staff report?
Yeah, so I want to bring up one point, it it does, it's more of a report. We are listing the properties in the downtown area, one of the things, Mr. Mayor, I know you've brought up to me before, is asking me the status of what, what do we do with the? The Main Street or what, the Drury University, um is that correct? You'd asked me what we were gonna do with it, or committee?
Yes, yes, correct.
It's kind of like, I know that Trent and them worked on it, and there was like public meetings and what to do with it. Uh, one of the things we got talking about today in staff discussions is, we're listing these properties, well. How does that align with properties, at least in the downtown, with what does that master plan uh include? And so while we're listing them, at the same time, we think it's gonna be appropriate to bring that overall discussion just back into general form. Into here is like, what what do you all want to see happen with the next steps? What would you like to see, some of the challenges associated, we rezoned the properties, we're listing the properties. And just bringing all that back together into a discussion and probably invite some of those stakeholders into the room as well. Is to get feedback and just have that general conversation, so that's something that, uh just for general awareness, not for discussion today, because it's not on the agenda. And I don't think we have anything prepared that we'd even be talking about, but we were talking about listing the properties. Karen talked about the rezone today, then we talked about what the value of the property, where the Main Street or Historic Society is with even raising money. Uh, should we list that property if they're not gonna build the building? A lot of different things, like, okay, that needs to get brought back into this arena and invite all the parties back in, so. I suspect you'll see us have that conversation uh in the next thirty to sixty days as part of the overall presentations as time permits, so. Um you will see that up as, and we'll, but we will be asking the council for some level of direction, what you want to do with the Drury University, like, what do you, what is your vision for that? Is another talking point that we'll have, so you'll see some more of that, staff, by Karen, did I cover that, Lisa, did I cover that? So, and Bob left early, condolences to hi- his wife, uh who lost her father in Nashville. This this past weekend, so thankfully, he stuck around, we told him he could leave, but thankfully he did, he stuck around to do a great job, and he does a great job for us on our financial. Reports, any questions that you all have after today, especially on streets, those are big topics in the city, in every city, that's not just for public. Uh INI is not gonna get a bunch of warm fuzzies, but uh, uh but I do appreciate the comments about how we run it like a business. And uh try to figure out the best way to maximize the community's dollar. Thank you for your time, it's almost two hours, but it's a good day, go golfing now.
Excellent day.
For.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron, do we have anything from council before we close the meeting today, any questions, closing statement? I appreciate all the hard work from staff and everything that went into today, uh that's a lot of great information, especially when it's steep, went the streets and the INI information. I I think that stuff is amazing, just between the increase in capacity and and how much all the science of that and hydraulics and it's sewer, but uh, yeah. No one else has anything to add? Thank you for the lunch today, thanks for all the hard work that went into that as well, and uh, meeting is adjourned.